All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody here for our October 7th, 2019 meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, and I ask Greg Slay, would you say a prayer for us, buddy?
That's right. What a privilege it is to start our meetings with prayer. Thank you, Lord, for your goodness to us, your kindness toward us, your generosity to us, Lord, the mercy that you show us, all of which we don't deserve. Father, help us not to take for granted the many blessings that you have bestowed on us. Father, I thank you to these men, the time that they sacrificed for the benefit of our county. I pray, Father, that they would be given the wisdom and the discernment today, Lord, as they make decisions that are in keeping with your will and the best interest of all citizens of our county. Father, we thank you so much for our first responders that protect us each and every day, Father, with the sacrifices that they and their families made. Let it not be taken for granted. Protect them and bring them home safely. Amen.
Amen. All right, under public comments, we got Brandon Cobb. You got thirty seconds right now. I'm playing, Brandon.
Good morning. We're getting towards the end of the season here. September is gone, and October's starting on a downhill slope. Our trap numbers have dipped a whole lot since the beginning of September. We're averaging ten to twenty mosquitoes per trap now instead of eighty, ninety. So, it's that time of year, things start slowing down in the mosquito business. Things are looking real good. We did have one human west Nile case in September. We went in and did our extra spraying, did a little bit more surveillance and larva sighting. Things seem to be going pretty well. It's been a light year for west Nile throughout the whole state, which we can thank God for. It's, I think we've had eight cases statewide, two here in central. We're just winding up the season. Mosquitoes, the weather has a lot to do with it, but they also have their own internal seasons when they're at peak and all. All the species tend to kind of start slowing down about this time of year. Well, right after the end of October should dip down quite a bit, and then November is just kind of watch and see what they do.
Kind of like Mississippi State?
Yes. I'm not gonna get into that.
Stop doing that.
I love the state of Mississippi. I've moved away and come back so many times, and I don't want to go anywhere else, but when it comes to college football, I'll go for Clemson. I'm staying out of Mississippi State, Ole Miss, USM.
Your trainer.
Well, I lived in South Carolina for seven years, so...
At least you're not Alabama.
Who would be?
A little bit too close to the conversation.
All right, I shouldn't even say that.
That's why I stay out of it. But we're looking at the end of the season, and we look like we're gonna finish real easy, real smooth. Rankin County's done real good this year mosquito-wise. Our numbers have not been real high, actually under estimates. And we can't eradicate all the mosquitoes. I wish that we could, and of course, then y'all have to give me a different job, but they've stayed down, everything's looked real good, and we're looking to finish the season strong. Start prepping in November for next year. Hopefully, we'll be here next year. So, y'all have any questions for me?
Seems like this, I mean, this seems to be one of the easier years.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, just mosquitoes in, as a whole, I've not seen them or been around them as much.
Hey, Brandon, this is a good time to say, I'm doing my job.
That's why it's all us.
I opened the door for you, you know what I mean?
So, we're just saying, of course, I have to give credit where credit's due, or to ask good God almighty, but we're catching what he's leaving. So, it's been a real, real good year for mosquitoes. So, the one thing I have noticed, I was talking to Mike earlier, is a lot of people have said, made comments about mosquitoes in their house or vehicles. I've seen this, and I think it's just been so hot in Mississippi that, you know, they're coming in for the air. So, but Jay, I wanted to tell you, I did talk to that lady.
You did?
And went out there and did an inspection also. I took care of her.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
You said that we only have one case. All the tramps you're getting, are we, we do have some mosquitoes with the west Nile in them, right?
Yes, we have. Over the summer, we've had one or two pulls, and we went in and sprayed those areas a little bit more to keep them from becoming human cases.
Yeah.
But for September, we had no positive pulls. It was all negative from the traps. And actually, in that area, we have not had a positive all year. So, whether or not, you know, it was just an isolated location, or if they were somewhere else when they got bit. Because west Nile takes so long to diagnose, that, you know, you could be in New Orleans for the weekend, get bit, come back four weeks later, show up. You know, we do our precautions to make sure it's not in that area and fight if it is, but we never know exactly where someone got bit and got west Nile.
Thank you, man.
Brandon, did you actually, did you even talk to that lady I called you about?
Yes, I did.
Okay. All right, that was probably an interesting phone call, but I just want to make sure you did call.
I had an interesting phone call as well, but yes, I talked to her and educated her and helped her out.
Okay.
We're good there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Brandon. Dr. Anderson, come on down.
Mr. President, I had invited Dr. Anderson to come share a few words with us. Last conversation we had, he was, you know, was a little concerned or uncertain about the adoption site in the animal shelter, and Dr. Anderson is in charge of that.
Yeah, thinks he called me and left me a message and called him, so...
Yeah, I don't think he returned that call, did he?
I did not.
No, I didn't. But he's here, he's here to share a few words with us. Great.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. I would like to propose a working relationship with the board of supervisors, the sheriff's department animal control division, and Rankin County Animal Adoption Foundation. We started the Rankin County Animal Adoption Foundation in 2011, and we became a 501(c)(3) in 2012. We get the majority of our adoptive pets from owner surrenders and from the shelters in the community through the sheriff's office in Ken Sullivan. We operate mainly on donations and gifts of food and supplies. We spay and neuter and vaccinate every pet that we adopt out. We have built two dog parks in Rankin County. The first was Lake Shore Dog Park at the reservoir in partnership with the Pearl River Water District, Water Supply District. It's on the Rankin County side of the rez. The second dog park was, we just had the ribbon cutting on the 20th of September. It's called the Pavilion Dog Park, and it's right across the street from the multipurpose building. And the sheriff, the mayor, and several of y'all were there. We appreciate your support with that. We've got a really great board of directors that I've worked with for the past eight years, and I'd like to introduce you to them. I'm the president, Robert Angelo is back here. He's a retired director from Energy, worked with Energy. Nancy Branton, she's a wealth management advisor at Wells Fargo and past president of the Mississippi Symphony Orchestra. June Hollis is a retired school teacher from Rankin County Schools. She's not here today. Sharon Hoffman's a retired surgical office staff, and she's also not here. Gloria Wyndham is our newest board member, and she's with the Wyndham CPA firm. Cheryl Kennedy is a veterinary receptionist, and Ann Summers is a retired architect at CDFL. We have been blessed with a real generous group of folks in Rankin County that have supported our efforts to place abandoned cats and dogs in a forever home. I've lived and worked in Rankin County for the last forty-five years, and I am so pleased that the board of supervisors is building a new animal shelter. We have needed some improvement there for a long time. I'm also looking forward to working with the sheriff's department and the county to help manage a real problem of overpopulation and stray pets. We do have a serious problem with that. I've provided some plans to the building committee, Sheriff Bailey and his staff. I've met with them to make sure that we meet their needs and that we can build a facility that will carry us through the next fifty years. We really need to do something that will last a long time. I thank you for the opportunity to present this to you and hope, you know, look forward to the opportunity of working together for that, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you guys might have related to that.
I think y'all are gonna have a contribution to the project as well, an equity contribution?
Yeah, we're planning on, in the front part of that, having an adoption foundation or adoption center in the front of it. And this will be staffed by our staff folks, all volunteer. We may have to have a paid person that answers the phone and is there day to day. We're planning on cleaning up, doing our own maintenance, and not requiring the sheriff's department or any labor there. We are gonna make a contribution of money to outfit the front. We're gonna have to have kennels and, you know, chairs and things like that in the front part of that. Yes, we're, you know, fifty thousand or more to start with. And, you know, nothing will come out of your budget to pay any of our people. Main thing we need is a place to operate. And I think if we can get these dogs out of the shelter and bring them out to the public where they can be seen and adopted, then we'll save more of them than we have been able to in the past. There won't be any administrative fees or anything like that that we're gonna get paid. What we want to do, we'll operate out of adoption fees, fundraisers that we have, donations. We're gonna have volunteer workers. We're gonna write some grants, and we'll be able to get some reduced veterinary fees from my colleagues, and we'll do a voucher system for the spay and neuters. So, if somebody adopts a pet from us, they'll pay the adoption fee, and they'll take that voucher to the veterinary of their choice or Big Fixery or wherever to get that done so that we can stop the overpopulation.
I have a lot of concerns about this, but I don't know if you can answer them all today.
I'll try.
Well, I, well, one, spending a million dollars on a dog pound is pretty exorbitant to me, you know. I don't, I don't want to spend that much money to build that personally, but also, I don't know if just us making our facility bigger is the answer. I mean, we had that place out on Hollybush. My goodness, we and them had shut it down because they had three hundred animals there.
Yeah. I can understand that concern, yeah. Being bigger is not necessarily the answer, but finding homes for these pets so they don't have to be put to sleep is something that I think you and I can agree on. We don't want to do that. I know you well enough that...
That's right.
But you have to build for a little growth, and we are planning for growth. You don't have to build the entire plan that we had. It can be added on to, you know, especially in the run part in the back, but we have to make sure that the sheriff's needs, or when he gets a call, is they get picked up off the road and there's a place for them to go. What we're gonna do is take those from him and find homes for them. So, the part that we're gonna be doing in the front up there will not be very costly to y'all, except for the footprint of the building to be a little larger.
The, like I said, I would like for us to come up with another solution other than just building a building and doing an adoption center, because this is not gonna stop people being irresponsible with their animals. There needs to be another solution other than us building a bigger facility and adopting our dogs, because even then, where am I gonna give them? I mean, I hate to say it, but about a month, maybe, you know? How long are we gonna be able to keep an animal in an adoption center?
Once we take them, they're gonna go out our door, or they're gonna stay with us.
Period.
Yeah, they're not going, they're not going back to the shelter.
So, even then, though, you're gonna be limited to how many you can have.
Yeah, but I think we can move, you know, twenty-five or thirty a month to start with pretty easily. I don't, I don't think there's a solution to getting them off the street. We're gonna have to do that. But I think the visibility of this on Marquette Road, a nice facility out front, people are gonna go by that every day, going to the ball fields or the amphitheater, and it will be much more visible to them. We're also gonna do things on Facebook and the internet to get, these are the pets we have for adoption, so they'll know. And I think a lot of it's just not knowing where to go, you know? A shelter that just hordes pets away is not what we're looking for. We're trying to find homes for them and get them, get them out of that environment into a forever home.
Just on a clarification, you know, we sat down with Brian on the front end of this, and, you know, eighty percent of this footprint is what he needs, not a want, not even for expansion, is what he wants. Now, you roll your eyes, Jay, but I mean, we can't solve the problem. It's our job to supervise, provide the facility and stuff, do it. We've got a building out there that's fifty years old, it was never built, so it's an animal shelter, period, you know? The sheriff has made it work, and you heard him say this is his number-one problem he has to deal with in the county. And I don't think this board wants the job of keeping up dogs back, because he has mentioned on more than one occasion to give it back to us. This is not a solution, no. It won't solve the problem with irresponsible pet owners, but it gives the animals an opportunity to have another home, you know, and gives them an opportunity. And I just see this as a really a win-win situation. Worst-case scenario, if the 501(c) doesn't play out, sheriff's got two thousand square feet of office space to utilize that he needs, you know? It's worth an opportunity, a shot, to see what we can do, so...
The only, the only thing that I've heard really is a dollar figure. That's the drawback.
Yeah, I can't control that, but I do, I do understand what you're saying.
But if you look at it from outside, I don't mean this ugly, but a house, fancy house for dogs and people and animals, and people go, you know, what do they, what do I live in? You know, I don't have that kind of money in my, how many homes? And we got people that need homes, but we're building facility. That's the only thing I've heard, you know, street talk, that I can't believe y'all gonna put that in a animal shelter. So, I mean, it's hard to sell from that perspective.
To build a building is expensive. It really is. I agree with that.
Have we looked at, I mean, I don't know, have we looked at what it would take to improve what we have?
Well, start over is the recommendation.
Yeah. I'm the one, I'm the one who pushed the whole thing to get...
Have you got a dollar figure?
For what?
On what it'd take to do some of the existing buildings?
It costs more to redo the existing building than it would do something new.
Shock me.
Yeah, I mean, and the visibility of that is nonexistent. Nobody knows where it is. If you put it out in front, it's gonna be nice-looking. People are gonna see it. They're gonna stop in there and look and see what we have, and of course, the communication part of it is up to us. We'll get that part done. And, you know, we're already, you're already doing this stuff. It's just not visible, and this, we're overcrowded and conditions are, you know, need improvement, for sure. But I understand. All I want to do is, all we want is a little part in the front to be the face of the county and help find these pets and homes.
It's just hard for me to sell that to a lot of my people, for sure.
Right.
And just people outside in general, not just my people.
Right.
Why a million dollars? That's a big number.
It's a big number. It's a big building. It's about eighty-nine hundred square feet, but the part that we're asking to use, not to own, just to use, is about two thousand square feet in the front. And that, that part, and after maybe a year, we might be able to start paying you rent to be able to use it. We're just, at this point, trying to get off the ground with this. We've been operating for a long time, but I retired from my veterinary practice in Cross Gates, and I don't, we don't have a place for me to do this. And it's not just for me, it's for the county, but...
Dr. Anderson, how are you going to staff it?
All volunteers, maybe one paid employee to answer the phone every day. But we'll, we'll be open three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, right now, that are planned, until we get busy enough to need to be open all the time. And of course, the cleanup and care will be daily, but it'll be all, it'll all be our staff.
See, you don't see an issue with volunteers?
Uh-uh. We got people calling right now who want to help, just because they've heard about it, and I don't really think that's gonna be an issue.
Jay, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have more discussion to be had down the road anyway, so...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, next on our list is Mike Smith, Richland Creek Drainage District.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the opportunity to address you this morning. I've been serving on the Richland Creek Watershed District officially since back in February, but I've been affiliated with it since it was formed in nineteen sixty-one. I came before you last July twenty-eighteen, and Freddie Harold and I came to you, and we talked about the possibility of getting funding to do some improvements that are drastically needed, to relieve flooding in the whole Richland Creek District. A lot of people in the room don't know where the Richland Creek District runs, but it runs all the way from northeast, northeast of Brandon, around Brandon, through Brandon, Pearl, Richland, into the Pearl River. It's the largest drainage district within the county. At the time we came to you before, I told you that I thought we had some possibilities of getting funding, do some improvements that would greatly relieve the flooding that we have now, and help lay the groundwork for more economic development in Rankin County. At that time, I told you that it would be fifty-fifty matching, and that the board, you know, if the board wanted us to do it, we needed your support to go after the money. And at that time, all I heard was, go for the money. Well, we have been allocated a million and a half dollar grant to do a comprehensive master plan of the whole drainage district. It's a preliminary planning to do the costing, to determine how much the improvements would cost. And in that money, or in the application, we requested forty-six million dollars of funds to just address the problems that are in the existing district. Now, under this master plan, we'll be able to more than double the area of the Red Drainage District, because it wasn't all included in the original. The government has spent over a million dollars doing a master plan for the district, and so we don't need, we don't need the master plan, we don't need a master plan to tell us what the problem are. With the master plan that we're doing now is an upgrade to define the scope of work that needs to be reformed and to, like I said, more than double the area of the drainage After we advised the board of that last year, we asked numerous times to meet with the board to discuss how we could go about funding this, and we have not received any opportunity to meet with the board. Now, I understand that the board did not, declined our request for funding, and so that means that if we don't have requests, we're gonna have funding to upgrade the facilities that we've got, where it will meet the maintenance standards for us to get the next funding, then we won't, we won't get the next funding. So, I'm here this morning to just get some advice from you on what you would like for us to do. I'm open to any suggestions you can give us.
I don't really think it's our role to suggest, Mr. Smith. Yes, I think our advice would be pick up the copy of the letter that the board authorized the board attorney to draft, and Mr. Smith has received a copy of, Mr. Harold's received a copy of. Follow the recommendations that are contained in that letter. That would be my advice.
As long as y'all are a legal entity unto yourselves, we can't tell you what to do. We can't say what goes what. I mean, you got to, y'all got to handle y'all's problem and solve it before you can bring it to us, try to help. I mean, I just, Mr. Slay spent some time putting together the, where the statute says and the statute and stuff like that, and we just don't have, I mean, I think you're exactly right. It needs work, and it's fallen down last several years, and I hate to see all that money go to waste if we don't do something about it, but you have certain legal ramifications that are involved, and we can't do anything until y'all do what you gotta do, you know?
Well, my point is, we need the support of the board to do whatever we need to do. I mean...
I think the board supports the Richland Creek, the board, and we appreciate you getting on board with Freddie, because right there for a while, it was just Freddie, you know, and he didn't have any help, and we appreciate your sincerity of getting involved. But I mean, again, our hands are tied. I mean, we're more than happy to sit down with you and listen to what you want to do and go forward, but you've got a certain legal hurdles you've got to overcome first before we start spending any time here. I mean, we just can't give money. Is that correct, Mr. Slay? I mean, we just, we don't have that, even if we wanted to. We can't do it.
I have reviewed the letter that Mr. Slay gave us, and I don't see that that's gonna do anything to, can be done in such a period of time that we can save these funds. That's my concern.
Whose fault is that?
Whose fault is it?
Yes.
I don't know.
It's your fault. It's y'all's fault for not waiting until right here at the end and then coming in here wanting us to do something that's illegal.
We legally can't do it. I think that's what we're trying to say. We just fully support the project, fully, and we all, we all, we're concerned about flooding and drainage and all, but if we legally can't give the money, we're, we just can't do it. Our hands are tied.
Well, I mean, are you gonna tell me that your hands are tied if we, if we come up with a, as Mr. Slay suggested, if we go back and look at what the authorization for us to raise money is? I mean, I know what that is. I mean, what do you expect us to do? We've already got a legally formed drainage district with authority to make recommendations to the board, but we don't, we don't, we can't approve the funding.
Well, how would we do it if it's illegal?
Well...
He knows the statute. He knows what he's saying.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, how can we do it if it's not something we can do legally?
Well, we just tell the senator we don't need the money and send it back, let somebody else in Mississippi use it.
You're not answering my question either. I said, how can we do it if it's not legal?
Well, we've been operating as a watershed for quite a while, and it was legal.
Have we been funding?
What has changed?
We haven't given you any money. We have not given it one dime to the district. The county has not.
Well, you did, because it was paid from tax revenue.
That's right.
But you're the only one that can assess the tax.
No, 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 no. And therein lies the problem. I'm fairly confident that Mr. Freddie understands this. I'm not sure where the failure to communicate lies. There's clearly a failure of communication. The process is very simple. The Richland Creek Drainage District files a petition in the Rankin County Chancery Court to establish the appropriate benefited parcels that receive benefit from the operations, the improvements of the Richland Creek Drainage District. The Chancery Court determines whether or not the information that is provided about who the benefited parcel owners are and what is the benefit of each parcel owner from the operations of the district. The Chancery Court then determines whether or not the millage is appropriately assigned, or should it be expanded to additional parcels? Should it be increased to account for the actual benefit? That is a chancery court proceeding that should result, after appropriate notice and hearing and opportunity to be heard to the members of the public, should result in a chancery court order that provides a number that represents the benefit to all of the parcels within the district. Our tax assessor is providing a copy of the chancery court order and does a takeoff and assessment on the basis of what the chancery court has ordered. This board then approves a millage that's determined by our tax assessor. That's the way the process works. Your involvement is very simple. It's to take and receive a court order and your assessor's determination and levy a millage. That's your involvement. What you have been approached about is handing them a check. That is illegal. You will not hand them a check, okay? They could come to you and say, we would like to borrow money. The question that needs to go back is, your millage amount is eight thousand dollars roughly a year. How are you gonna debt service a note if we let you borrow money from us? Or they could go and issue bonds. Again, the question is, how are they going to debt service a bond issuance if they don't have enough millage coming in? Now, here's the thing. Why don't they have enough millage coming in? Because nobody at Richland Creek Drainage District has bothered to determine whether or not the millage that they are getting is adequate. They've just not done anything. That's not this board's fault. That's not NRCS's fault. Richland Creek Drainage District has not accounted for the cost to maintain the infrastructure that they have put in the ground, and they haven't gone to the chancery court and gotten a millage assignment that would reflect what is the benefit. That's all work product that they have to do. That's all work product that they have to do. We can't do it? They have to do it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'd just like to address one point there. The cost of this Drainage District has been borne by the people along the Richland Creek that were originally farmers, and this program was all oriented towards cropland. There's not any cropland in there now. We have got to change the way we assess millage. Now, gentlemen, we can sit here and talk about all this. I can assure you, I've talked to the tax assessor, and all these parcels are being charged fifty cents an acre. Now, fifty cents an acre in nineteen sixty-one may have been some substantial amount of money, but it's not much today. And the amount is really seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-something dollars that we get to spray and run the whole operation. And there's no need to fool ourselves in thinking going back here, and we're going to be able to put all of this on the landowners. So, let's just face up to the fact that you cannot put all this on the people that are the benefited from the flooding itself. The whole county benefits from this, and if you're saying you've got to make the landowners that are, that are, that are perceived protection from flooding pay the whole thing, it's never...
We're not saying that. That's what the court says. That's what the statute is.
Okay. Well, let's don't play, let's don't play words here. Let's just get down to the facts. Then, what's the alternative?
Go through the Chancery Court, just like he, like the letter says, go through the steps that is out there, the legal way to do it.
Is the board willing to tax somebody outside of the area? This getting...
It's not a matter of if we're willing to or not.
The board, the board can do, they can recommend whatever they won't do. I mean, I'm just saying, you're just, you're just trying to...
Legally, we cannot give you a check. Legally.
I'm asking you for a check. I'm asking you for advice right now.
Advice is to go through the steps that that letter told you to go through.
The whole county benefits from this. Okay?
I agree. I agree with everything you're saying.
Now, should you put all of this on like...
Now, this, this same group told, rolled us on the bus and said that the reason they weren't doing anything out there is because the board supervisors wouldn't fund them.
I...
Yes?
I'm just saying is that I'm asking for advice.
I'm giving you advice. Go through the court, do it the legal way, and we'll try to help you every way we can.
This is no different than us going up and working off on private property. We cannot do it. This is the same thing. We support and want to help, but legally, we cannot. We support you, but we cannot do this under this one. So, like Mr. Gaines said, go through the process, and let's hope for the best. That's the best I can tell you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next, we have state treasure unclaimed property. Are they here?
No. I wanted you to make that announcement.
Okay. It's just, all right, I'm aware, I mean, I know what this is.
Is this real property to you, or just, just...
Money.
Money.
There's, I want to say it's something in the neighborhood of seven million dollars that's unclaimed from...
I'm trying to keep up with what little money I have.
In Rankin County. And Lynn Finch's office is over that, and they're going to, they're going to come here, and we're going to advertise, or they're going to advertise, or whatever. If you, and they've got a list. You can look on this long list. It's a book, Janus, four inches thick probably, that, of people in Rankin County that have money that they don't know they have. It could be as little as twenty-five, or it could be as much as twenty-five thousand or more. But anyhow, on October twenty-eighth, this year, from three to six p.m. in this room, they're going to be here, and there's certain things that you've got to bring if you are one of those people. And you can look in the book, or you can look online, or call, and I think you have to have maybe bar certificate, social security card, something, stuff like that. But on that day, you can come and work with these people face-to-face and see about receiving unclaimed monies that the state is holding. And it is significant. I've looked through it, and I recognize several names. I didn't look through all of them, but...
Did I have any?
Yeah, Jay, I think you did. All right. Let's go move on. Old business?
Motion to approve the sixteenth and thirty minutes.
All right, I got a motion by Bob, second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to approve consent.
Second.
All right. Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes on consent. Oh, Lord. Golly, Carl, you picked a bad time.
Is there ever a good time?
It could be better. No, come on.
Not on this project.
You're always good to get to follow something, aren't you?
I am.
You picked the good ones.
You think the Lord is telling us something?
I bet.
Okay. I've got, I've got two things that I want to really go over this morning.
You've got a minute and a half on the first one. A minute and a half?
He'd probably happy with that.
First thing is update you on the status of the projects. And then, at the last meeting, we were asked to get some more information about the schedule of the courthouse.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm, I'll get into that, but with me this morning to explain their issues are the representatives of the contractor, Chris Albritton and Nick Richards. We'll go over the project status first. That first page is kind of a summary of where we're at on costs. Twenty, twenty million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars plus one ninety-eight forty-five on courthouse, four million, three seventy-two, three twenty-four on the misdemeanor facility, total of twenty-four million, nine hundred, one thousand, five twenty-two point ninety-four. However, that's the current price, but we're actually going to have some credits to that. And if you'll look down there on the next line, is a, we projected a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of credits, is actually, at this point, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five ninety-three point seventy, and I'll go over where that comes from. On the misdemeanor facility, it issued a substantial completion on August twenty-ninth. So, they're actually working toward getting prisoners in there. We do have two change orders that have come up recently. I'm going to go over those. One is, we have a request from the sheriff's department to add some access control and a mag lock, and the cost of that is approximately six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars. We also have a second one, and I may have to get Tim to go over that with me. Some emergency sewer work and testing on the misdemeanor. And what happened there is there was, this existing city sewer line has been, has slid down the hill and been damaged. There's some debate about exactly who's responsible for that, but there was a meeting out there, and there were some decisions made about contractor Flagstar would do this, county would do that, and the city would do their part. Well, when it came right down to it, the city refused to do anything. They were saying they weren't responsible for anything. But the short, the long solution was, there was a broken...
But we couldn't, they couldn't determine we actually damaged the pipe though, could they? Okay. Thank you.
But there was sewer, raw sewage flowing into the new detention pond, so contractor didn't have any choice but to fix that. I mean, otherwise, it would've gone. So, there was a cost of seven thousand, four hundred and eight dollars and forty-six cents to do that. So, the total change orders is fourteen thousand, one seventy-nine forty-six. Now, even including that work, there's going to be a credit back to the county of eighty-two thousand, nine hundred, thirty-two dollars and four cents. And that comes primarily, if you remember, there was an original bad dirt over there too, change order for a hundred and something thousand. Well, they're not using all that. Eighty-two thousand is coming back to the county. So, they all have, they're submitted one more pay application right now for ninety-five thousand, and that still leaves a balance of two hundred, one thousand in the contract, which includes a hundred and something thousand dollars of retainage. So, at some point, they'll be submitting that. But the bottom line is, there's going to be eighty-two thousand dollars in savings coming back to the county over what was approved originally.
Can we use that on the dog shelter?
Actually, I need cars now. That's the last one that I have, make a dog call.
So, you just had to go there.
County will be getting, y'all, y'all, I don't want to be involved in how that money's spent. Put that in the paper, please. That's not my road. So, that's, that's the misdemeanor. On the courthouse schedule, right now, and I'll let them talk about it a little bit more. Substantial completion scheduled for the end of December. There still is an eighty-five thousand dollar plus contingency allowance in the project, and I think we'll be getting some money back on some of the dirt work possibly. It won't be as...
You say in December?
Mm-hmm.
They keeps going further and further away.
But that's, that's where we're at right now in the courthouse project. And I gave you, if you have any questions on that, on where we're at on all the changes and where we're at on monies. And you'll see on that spreadsheet, there's a two thousand, there's a two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-three seventy balance toward the bond issue. Some of that may be spent, but I would still assume that most of that will be coming back. And that does include the eighty-two thousand dollars on the misdemeanor. So, that's where we're at on that project.
So, overall, we're still under budget?
Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars at this point today.
Because of...
Well, I'm not sure, because of, we've got, the sheriff's worked with us. Now, there is, we had allowed fifty thousand dollars for landscaping on the misdemeanor, which the sheriff's department's going to take care of. I don't think they'll spend that much, and we are not building a dog kennel. By the way, we got that down to four hundred thousand. That's a whole different. I don't even want to go there. I can, if you have any questions about the other shelter y'all talking about, I can tell you why, the cost on things of that nature. But that's where we're at. It's a straightforward, the misdemeanor's basically finished.
A couple of months ago, y'all, you were giving us an update, and on one part, we were running over...
We're still over?
And that got taken wrong. I mean, I had so many people, oh, boy, y'all, three hundred thousand in, in red, you know, and we're not even through with the building. And that wasn't the case. That wasn't what you were telling us. It just got...
You're right, and I may not have been clear about that. These, when you're, when you do buildings, and the veterinarian doctor can't explain it, I mean, this, the challenge with the courthouse has been the site primarily. It's just been a, it's just been a battle, and I'll, I'll let the contractor talk a little bit about that. It slopes forty feet from one end to the other. We've had three different retaining walls, which, by the way, we redesigned with the help of the contractor to save a couple of hundred thousand dollars on that. So, we've looked at that every way we could. It's, it's just been a challenge. One of the things that's come up on that particular project is it's got a lot of sandy soil. Every time it rained at the beginning, it washed a good amount of that sandy soil away. Matter of fact, they've had to work with the contractor and misdemeanor because a lot of that wound up over there, clogging up the detention pond. So, they, both Flagstar, the contractor for the misdemeanor facility, and Albritton, contractor for the courthouse, have worked together. Y'all don't hear all that, but to solve that issue. It's just been a challenging site, and of course, y'all are aware, we've had three areas of bad soil that they found on the courthouse site, and they found an area of bad soil on the misdemeanor site. This whole area is just bad soil, but you've worked with the sites you're given. So, anyhow, that's been the issue with, with that project. And again, I'll let them talk about how that's delayed, but, and I'll, if you have any other question about the cost, I do have the numbers you were asking for, Bob, last time, but I didn't want to get into that until you've got any issues or questions on the cost of the two facilities.
Well, didn't we originally expect to have five hundred thousand left over to be able to remodel our existing?
We did, we did expect to have more left over, but, you know, not initially, we really didn't, because we were projecting the misdemeanor to be around five million. It came in a million and under, so we wind up having, but we got into that, and most of it's been this bad soil on both sites. I think it's been almost, if you take both of them, there was change orders for almost four hundred thousand dollars for bad soil. Now, again, we're not, I know we're not using it all on the misdemeanor, and I think we're going to get some back on the courthouse, but I'm, you know, at this point, I'm not sure. But what you're talking about, Jay, is true after we came in way under the budget on the misdemeanor.
Yes.
And we still got, as I mentioned, we still got eighty-five thousand dollars in contingency on the courthouse, and actually, there's more than that. There's a few other allowances that we haven't used yet, but I don't want to...
Out of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's going to be left, how much do you expect to be carried over when we're finally complete next year?
Is a balance of credit?
Right.
I'm thinking somewhere around two hundred thousand, at least, what I'm thinking.
Okay.
But that's, I mean, we've, most of that's unknown in the, in the site, and we're, I think we're just about through with the site as far as unknown stuff.
All right. When do you, when do you think you'll be filled up the outsides so you can start totally focusing on the inside?
I think you're talking about four to six weeks or so of closing it in. And really, those questions need to come to them. I'm giving you my estimate, but they...
Carl will saw that mic real bad.
No, I, I've got one more thing.
All right.
If I can find it, I'll, let me, let me give you this calculation of the...
Carl, why are you doing that? I've been over there a few times, and it, the problem with closing, closing it in, not being able to get, the dirt, I mean, the soil has had something, I mean, a lot to do with...
It's been the major reason why they have...
Why we haven't been able to close it in.
That's exactly right.
And we can't go in there and put the woodwork and stuff that's, we want to have in our courtrooms until we get it closed in. There's a, but, but really, what's been slowing us is not being able to get to that point because of the soil.
Exactly right. It's not, it, it compounds itself, and I'll explain a little bit, and then I'll let them...
On the microphone, I would have to invest myself.
When they originally started construction, as you may be aware, we've had the second heaviest rain in the history of the state of Mississippi. And you'll see on my thing, there's actually was, of actual rain days, now, not all this is great amounts, but it's actual rain days, since this project started, it's over three hundred, three hundred rain days. This site has a lot of sandy soil on it, and when it rains, it washes it out. Now, there's been some other things that have compounded that. There was a city water break up on, I think it's Felicity Street up by the McLorins north of that, but it took two weeks to get that fixed. So, that was right at the beginning of forming the foundations. Every time, it just washed half that hill down in there, and they had to get it out. They couldn't do any work, and then they had to wait to dry it out. Another thing that compounded it was these three areas of bad soil found. The one that really complicated things was the one to the east parking lot, because it was twelve feet deep, and they had to dig it, and then, once they started digging it, then it rained again. Now, the problem is, they couldn't get their equipment, and again, y'all jump in here if I'm telling you, they couldn't get all the equipment because they were digging a hole around on the east side of the building to close it in. If you'll notice now, you know, all the sides, other than this side, are closed in. That's because they worked around that. But you can't, our specifications will not allow them to do some of the interior work until it's closed in, because there has to be humidity control. You know, if you, if you start putting ceiling tile, woodworking, or some of these other things in there before the building's enclosed, and the air conditioning, humidity controls on, it'll just warp. It won't, so, in, in a sense, we won't let them. So, we've kind of been the cause of that delay until they get it enclosed. But that's, you know, that's part of the specifications of any project, but that has complicated it. That kind of added to that was the water line discovered on the corner of North in Timberline, the city water line that didn't show up, I believe, on, on any survey. Well, you know, what I've seen in correspondence, that was discovered in April, and it wasn't fixed by the city till June. Now, you know, and it complicated working in that area again. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not here to make excuses. I'm just trying to tell them the information I know about what's going on, but it's not a simple, straight line. But it's not a simple, straight line. It's a domino effect. And what you see, what I've given you there, is on that first page, that's each month, the actual rain days, what the contractor requested, what we recommended. And the reason why there's a difference between what we recommended sometimes, because some of those days were on, were on a Sunday when they weren't working at the time, and what the board has approved. And there's a forty-eight day difference in that. If you flip to the second page, it talks about the change orders. What, what was approved in the number of days is two-hundred-twenty-one. What was requested by the contractor was three-hundred-and-one. And so there's an eighty-day difference. Now, I'll make a comment on that, and I'll let them expand on it. It wound up taking much longer to take care of that dirt than what we thought, and I'm, even what they requested. Especially on that east side. It just, it was, it was deeper. And like I said, when they started, when they uncovered it, then it started raining. But it takes a while to let it dry out. So that's the difference there. If you go to item three, notice to proceed was May first, two thousand seventeen. The original contract time is five hundred days. The contractor gave the board a credit, I think it was forty-five thousand dollars to go additional ninety days, which was five hundred and ninety days. So the original contract completion date, without any extension, would have been December last year, December twelfth. If you go down to item D, the approved extensions approved by this board were two-hundred-and-thirty-seven days, which brings the approved date to August fifth of this year. And then if you'll flip over to the third page, those are additional days requested by the contractor, but that weren't granted. And if you, if you do those days in there, then the, the completion, the date would be December eleventh. And their, their current projected schedule is December twenty-seventh. So that's kind of where we're at in summary of days. And I know that's maybe a little confusing. And I apologize because my computer went out Friday, and I'm just in the middle of putting this together. So I ran around this morning about six-thirty trying to come back up with this. But I, that's accurate, I believe, to the records that we have, so.
So Carl, these rain days and change order days, do they overlap? So they're additional?
They're additional. They're, they're, in the change order, you're, that's a good point, Jay. In the change order, let me go back to the page here. In the change order, there are, if you look on that second page down there toward the bottom, it says, approved change order. That's two-twenty-one minus ninety-two. The reason why I took the ninety-two out, because they do overlap. So I deducted that. There are, in two change orders, approved rain days. So I did deduct that from it to give you a hundred and twenty-nine, uh, as opposed to, uh, the additional ones. So I have, there were some approved in there that, that we've accounted for. So it's not double dipping.
So altogether, the total number of days that's been requested and total number of days that's been approved, including change order and rain days?
Right.
What, what is that number?
Okay, well, if you look on the last page, you'll see that, uh, the contractor requested, at the last item, time request, the contractor requested rain days is a hundred and forty. The board's approved ninety-two. And then if you go to the contractor requested, change order days is three-hundred-one. The board has approved two-twenty-one. So there's an additional one-hundred-and-twenty-eight days difference between what the contractor's requested and what's been approved.
So what's been requested is four-hundred-and-forty-one days?
That might, that might be correct. I can't add it up. I'm, I just broke it down. It's one-twenty-eight, uh, well, there's been.
One-forty and three-oh-one.
Right. You're right. You're right. I did not major in math, but you're right.
Oh, me either.
That makes sense, I think. And that's, what that is, is, is rain versus bad dirt, correcting the bad dirt. And as I, as I said, it, it's like dominos.
So some of the problems, so, so like Steve's saying, you can't get in there to work, so that stopped you. But the big thing that I see is you, you can't get in this materials off the camp. They have to be in a dry, uh, the climate they're working, they're gonna be in for the duration.
You, you're right. And they've made.
They gotta acclimate to that and stay there.
You're, you're right. You cannot, they have to be in there in a conditioned space. Now, uh, we've been out there at least once a week, usually multiple weeks, in the last two months, which y'all all know, we hadn't had much rain. They've made a lot of progress on, on, on that part. It's proceeded. Every time we've been out there, just our observations, it's been well-staffed. We're real pleased with the quality of the work. You know, we're not out there all the time, but I know my guy goes out there at six-thirty in the morning, and they're working. Again, that's just, we're, just from what we're seeing. We're not out there every day, so I can't honestly say everything. But what we've seen, we've been, we've been pleased with the quality of work and effort being made, just.
Guess, guess what I'm getting at, though? If you, if it had been, uh, they could, they could be working inside on finishing this part, and they can't even begin to do that till the outside's finished where we can close it up.
Well, they had been inside painting, uh, putting up.
No, I'm talking about this particular work here. None of that can be done until it's sealed up.
You're right. That's correct.
And also the stone, I've noticed they had to move stones, the, I guess the stone relocated numerous times. Is that correct? And so, I mean, that's just having to move this, move, because it's been sitting there. But it, it, it has to be moved because of the, the site work you're trying to do that was not planned on having to do.
That's exactly right. And that, and that brings up another point. It's a, we, we've tried to get as much parking on this site as the building will allow. And in, in doing that, there's no place for the contractor to store their materials, very little. So you're, you're exactly right. He's moved that around. And, and not only that, before the steel, we, you know, they were storing it across the street. And when they had to, it got, actually, we had to move it because it wasn't, got off of county property. We didn't, we didn't realize that. They didn't. But that is an issue. They've had to move stuff around just to work. So it's not been, it's not a simple job.
Well, I know they knew that, I know they knew the, the environment they were coming into, but what I'm getting at, I see some of their problem because they had to move some of this completely because they had to tear up or dig out because of the change orders for the soils of that particular area, then it couldn't even be used at all. So, I mean, they knew it was gonna be a problem, but this created more problem, which has delayed. I understand some of the, it's clearer now than in, as we've been going along, why some of this is a, a delay other than just rain.
You're right. You're right. You're saying it better than I can say it, actually. But I'll, do you want to make a preliminary statement, and I'll let?
The things that, the thing that jumps off the page to me that is eye-opening is the actual rain days. I, I knew we had had rain. I, I knew it had been challenging from a rain standpoint. But basically, over a two-year period, you know, only over forty percent of the time, we're dealing with rain days. Three-hundred-and-twelve out of seven-hundred. So that kind of stands out to me as making an already challenging site that much more challenging with the sandy soils. Even though the rain days equate to three-hundred-and-twelve, the request for additional time is a hundred and forty. And so that's a good bit short. That's a hundred and seventy-two days short of, I guess, what could have been requested, if you get right down to it. And so we're not that far apart as far as the contractor's requests for rain days and the board approved rain days, the, the difference being forty-eight days.
Well, the reason, you're right. Part of it is, we expect certain amount of rain each month. We, we put it in the specifications. There's, there's so many, National Weather Service says, there's so many days to be expected on average. Like, June is maybe six, April's seven. So that's, you know, so we don't generally allow the contractor to request that amount. So that's why there's, that's part of the reason why there's a difference in the, what's rained and what hasn't. And it has to be over a certain percentage. It has to be over so many, you know, tenth of an inch. But, uh, so it's not, it's not an exact science, but in order to be fair, and we also look at how it affects overall construction work. For instance, once they do get the building enclosed, if it's raining outside, well, then that's not gonna have the same effect because they're working inside. So we, we try and take all that into account when we come before the board to make a recommendation for, uh, extensions. And that's why you see there's a difference between what even they requested and what we recommended. But that's, you know, even though, for instance, we generally don't allow rain on some of these because they're generally not working. But if it rains a couple of inches, then that can affect work on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. So it's kind of a, we have to make what we think is a professional judgment on what's delayed them and what hasn't. So that's where you see the difference in those figures from us. But, uh, let me let, you know, I don't, let me let them talk.
May I ask, I have a question first before we get started. This is one of Mr. Slade. This is my first time forward in the big construction contract with all these kind of issues going on. So you're gonna have to kind of walk me through a few things. What, what, the problem is, we have approved days that we voted on, and they've requested some that we have not approved. And, and that gets into, to the end of the day, financial penalties. Is that correct? Is that really where we are in this, this discussion? Is that gonna bring it to a, I mean, whatever we've got stipulated in the contract is the days we get to penalize the contractor for not meeting that date. And we're here to try to maybe have a meeting of the minds, compromise, maybe.
That's exactly right.
Find out more information about what's going on, so we can either shrink that day, or we can start blow up and get ready. Is that kind of where we are?
Yes.
Pretty much, that's something.
I believe you've sized it up.
Okay.
Only the way that you can.
Thank you.
But Carl, when doing a bid, all these other contractors, they were hired for a reason. Probably because they knew this site was gonna be a difficult site. You know, I don't really, you know, I think we've been more than generous. We've already given two, over two-hundred days of change order days. I mean, at some point, it needs to stop, and I'm there.
Well, now, Jay, wait a minute. They could be working in there. That's the thing I've looked at. They could be working there if they could get into it. And also, if they could, they, no contractor knew about the, the dirt situation. But if they could get into it, and if they could, if it was being, if it'd be sealed up, they could be working in there.
Over two-hundred days of days. We given two-hundred additional days because of that?
But that was for the change order.
That is the change order. Change order is for the dirt. I, I didn't even count the days we given for rain.
Yeah, but that's change order for the dirt.
Okay.
But when they, what I'm saying, they can't work inside if they can't get in there, in that, uh, finish that front up, to seat it off till that part's done.
All right.
They can't put that material in there up either till it, I mean, probably.
I'm not agreeing with you.
No, I'm just, so I don't know what the compromise is, but I'm just saying, I understand some of their, on the construction side, I do understand some of it. I mean, if you had to hang steel, and you couldn't get there with a, a crane couldn't get into the building because you dug a hole out, you couldn't still hang steel. It's kind of the same scenario.
I know we're gonna be over a year.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you're exactly right. Now, you know, I'm just reading something in Clarion last week about Costco being six months behind.
That may not be true.
But, uh.
So we're looking at eighty days difference between what we've approved and what the contractor's approved.
At this point, yes.
What I'm looking at, we pay you to oversee the job, and you recommend, you're, you're out there. You, I mean, you're our guy. And I've got to go, I trust you. And I, when you say Steve, they really need, I mean, this really happened. I was there. And, I mean, you don't work for them. You work for us. And at some point, we gotta trust what you tell us.
You're, you're right. And my, my role is, I am your representative, and I'm supposed to be impartial to contracts, say that. We work with a number of contractors, and I, and some of them, I've got a project in Shreveport. They were a year and a half behind. And it wouldn't have, they just weren't performing. And I've had some other projects like that. You know, to be quite honest, which is, I think, what you want me to do, we have been pleased with the quality of work and effort put forth on this project. It's been more challenging than what even we expected it to be. In reviewing it, and I've talked to my construction administrator every day, and you can see the field reports he writes once a week. We write, we look at whether the project is well-staffed and what's being done. And I can just.
Have there been any reports that said maybe need more staff, maybe need?
Not on this project.
That's right.
Now, the one in Shreveport, every one of them says that, but not on this project. I, you know, and this is, we've never worked with Auburn before, so I haven't, I don't know these guys. But based on the complexity of the job and what we've seen, we've been pleased to this point. And I will put that down there. You know, come next week or a couple of months from now, they start, you know, we, we start seeing issues. My opinion may change, but.
What is, what is the one biggest issue you think you underestimated in doing your spatience for this job that created some of this problem?
The timeframe.
And I guess maybe the soil, condition of soil.
Yeah, we knew, we had soil borns, uh, and we knew, we knew generally, Bob, what those were. That's why the building's on piling. One of the things we didn't know, uh, when they did the borns in the parking lot, they only went down eight or nine feet, which is standard. And they ran into the problem when they were putting a water line down around twelve feet. So that was unknown. But just the amount of sand on the hill washing down, uh, and then just the complexity of trying to manage this on a tight site. Now, you know, was, was, it's become, it's more complex than what, and then given the rain, obviously, we, nobody knew that. If we didn't have all the rain, I think they, they would have been close to finishing at the first of the year, but that's.
So what are we trying to solve for that?
I'm just bringing, well, I feel like at first, y'all need to know all the information that we have. Uh, and we don't want to, really want to wait till the end of the project to try and work through all this. So, and I wanted them, we've met a couple of times with just, you know, on our own, and then with a couple of people representing y'all, just to get their take on it and see. So I wanted you to hear from them. Ultimately, it's your decision. I, you know, I've got my opinion of, of things based on what we've seen, and I, I'll share that with you as best I know how. I'm not trying to be their advocate. That's not my role to be the contractor's advocate. My role is to be your advocate. But I think you want to hear the truth, as I see it, based on my knowledge, uh, which is limited. But I've been in this business forty years, trying to get out of it in a few years, if I can. But that's, that's where we're at. I'm not always, you know, I'm not, I don't have all the answers, and I don't have all the expertise, but, uh.
Well, Mr. Auburn's kind of be here, so let's hear what you've got to say.
Thank you, Carl. Thanks, guys, for hearing me today. I just want to say that we have been working as diligently as we can, and if you guys have been noticing, past couple of months, we've made great, great, great strides to get through. I, I really just want to elaborate on Carl, because Carl did a pretty good job of trying to explain some of our hurdles that we've had. Number one was the weather. I know we keep harping on the weather, but three-hundred-and-twelve days of rain, i- it is so far un, uh, for us to be able to manage that and, and be able to overcome that on this site is very, very, very difficult. The weather created probably the biggest problem on this job, which we've already talked about, and that's the overexcavation on the east side of the building. I need to explain that i- in depth, I feel like, to you guys, where you can understand it even better than what you guys have discussed already. So we had the, the, the bad soils that showed up on the east side of the building. We started basically middle of December, two thousand and eighteen, and we did not finish that overexcavation till the middle of April, two thousand and nineteen. That's pushing, it's a little over four months, actual days, that we had a direct delay, and here's why. Number one, holes in, in the ground. We can't access the front of the building. What that did was it delayed storm drains going in. Storm drains going in delayed, uh, created additional erosion because we couldn't control the stormwater. Cost me more money, hardship trying to overcome all the washing. Next thing it delayed was sewer tie-in. The water line we discovered during this overexcavation that Carl brought up from the city, it delayed a sewer tie-in. That couldn't happen till the water line got tied in. All this was going along during the. All this was going along during the excavation time period. During this time period that we, we requested 45 days, it took us over four months to do this work. During this time period, you got to imagine, we got materials that are coming in at this job site. They should have been coming in and going up on the building, correct? They couldn't. We got a hole sitting there, can't access the building, can't get the materials put up. They're building up on our site. We're moving them around the site multiple, multiple times to do anything anywhere on the site. It got so, got so much stuff on the site at one point in time, you basically couldn't turn around on the job site. The hole we're digging is delaying putting stuff on the building, which is in turn closing in the building. During this time period, we did work on the inside of the building, made a lot of progress, but the, the really intricate stuff, we can't do. The woodwork, some of the terrazzo flooring, we can't install. The terrazzo flooring's got to be installed, even put handrails on the, uh, the steps. We got a step over there, the grand stairway, nobody can even use it right now, it wouldn't even have handrails on it. All these delays I'm talking about because of this one excavation, which nobody understood. We had no idea, Carl had no idea, y'all had no idea, that it was going to cause anywhere near to the amount of delays that it did. All we're asking today is just, you know, for y'all to understand our hardships, to try to sympathize with us, and, you know, us at some point in time come to a resolution on an even ground on, you know, what has happened. And, um, like I said, we're working at the diligence that we can, trying to get y'all's building finished. I know y'all want it, I want you to have it. We want you to have it way worse than y'all probably want it. But, I mean, I guess if y'all got any more questions about that, I can try to help field it. Carl did a great job. He, he, he's already pretty much kind of laid out a pretty good picture up until now as to, you know, what has been going on and what has transpired. It's just, you ask him what was something that he underestimated. I underestimated this excavation out front of the building. I- in no shape, form, fashion, we had any idea the ramifications of four to five, six months of delay due to one hole.
So, Mr. Auburn, what are you asking us to do today? What do you want?
Um, you know, you ask a good question about these delay, these, these, these days that we've requested, and the ones you've given us, and if any of them overlap. What we're saying is, we asked for delay days, they are very, very, like this, this excavation. You know, we asked for 45 days, it took us four months. You know, we're just asking for a little bit of sympathy and to at least give us what we asked for. Y'all gave us 21 out of 45. I mean, I, you know, it took us four months, we asked for 45. I mean, I would, you know, just think we could come within a resolution.
How many more you want?
I mean, I'd love to have all the 80 days that we've asked for, you know.
What's your, what's your minimum?
Let me get over here in my pocket.
I guess you've already given me what the minimum could be, I guess, huh?
No, I'm just trying, I mean, I, I see from a construction side, things that I did not see, but I understand a whole lot more. I wish we had maybe been made aware or noticed more of this earlier.
Yeah, Carl, you never come in here and told us anything. That's, that's a joke.
Not his joke place, yeah.
Jay's fault, I didn't want to dig the hole anyway, you know.
Yeah, y'all are so funny. I wasn't even going there. But I didn't vote for that, by the way.
But then you wouldn't have had any delays.
Sure.
Well, and I've seen it. I mean, I, I'm in town, I, you know, ride by there every day, uh, and when you dug the hole, it was like a pond there for about two or three months. Where she couldn't do anything every day. Every day, it looked like you're maybe getting the day I found sunshine, rain would hit. I, I'm with Jared on the, on the empathy part. I get it, this is my first foray into a big construction project, stuff like that, so I'm, I'm on the learning curve. But, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, you've got a sympathetic ear here, I just don't know, like Jay, Jared's, I don't know how far it's going to go.
The problem is, the problem that that created is things that you don't perceive, like not being able to access and not being, and now you can't seal it up. And if you could have sealed it up, then you could have done this, been doing this other work in there. That stuff is totally out of his control. And the rain filling that hole is out of his control.
You know, it occurs to me that, that this is a, this is a significant impact for the county. This is, it's an important building. It is structurally going to be at, at the cutting edge of buildings of this type in the state. It's very large. It meets the needs of the county for at least the foreseeable future, as, as we appreciate it, maybe 20, 25 years worth at least. And we want the building to be representative of the county and this board. And so it occurs to me that we want the contractor to feel as strongly about the quality of the building, certainly the architect, as you guys do, as your, your names are going to be on the building, by little.
Really?
Yep. And so, uh.
Where's Judy at?
The, the truth of the matter is that we've only done right. Y'all are, you know, y'all are going to be asked to sign off on all this. Contractors are going to be asked to sign off on it.
If we don't want our name on it, does it have to be on it?
So.
How can you want, put your name on the job flag?
What you want, you want, like, you, what you'd like to have is 80 days. Is that what it is?
I mean, that would help out, yes, sir.
What, what, what number, what was the number?
Well, that the 80 days from what Carl's saying is just the difference between what y'all have approved and what we've requested.
Is that 80 days what Carl has recommended to us? Is that?
No, I, there, there's, there's actually two of them. There's 40 and.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight and, and an 80.
So you recommended an additional 48 that we have not.
I don't think, I think I recommended a little bit less than that, but again, looking at, looking at what actually happened with the dirt, digging the hole, they underestimated it, and I underestimated what I thought it would take to.
Well, I, I mean, I, and I remember, as soon as they started digging, it went raining, and we had ponds out there.
When you estimate, you don't anticipate it to start raining the minute you dig the hole.
Through, let me just throw this outside, that we're all talking about the same thing here. Carl recommended 21 rain days more than you have approved? 21 more rain days. The contractor has asked, I believe, for 48 more, okay? So there's your differential on the rain days. So Carl's recommended that you give 113 total rain days through the last change order. 113, you've given 92. That's 21. Is that right, Carl?
Yes.
Why am I asking, Carl? I don't know.
Yeah, may I ask you, right?
That's the rain, so I want to keep them separated.
Yep.
Rain, your, your architect said, give them 21 more. The contractor's asking for 48 more. On the change order that is primarily related to the site challenges.
Where'd you get the 21 from?
That's the difference between what you've given and what Carl has recommended.
I mean, where did he, where'd you get his recommendation?
Off the first page, 113 rain days. Architect recommended. It's the, it's the fifth column to the right, Jay.
I got you.
Okay.
113.
So that difference is 21 days.
Yeah.
All right. Carl, I don't know what the difference is on the change order. I, I don't know that you're, do you guys even make a recommendation on the specific change order, like the site conditions?
Yeah, we were doing it, but I'll be honest, again, on like, on the main one, we didn't, well, just like they missed it, we had, we underestimated tremendously.
Okay. So unless Carl tells me that that's not what he's intending, the 80 days on the change order request would be the architect's recommendation.
Yes, you're right.
All right. So that's 100 and, 101 total days additional that, as we stand here today, that the board could, if it chose to do so, to do so, approve, that would adjust and change the dynamics here. Would make the completion, the, the completion, target completion date somewhere in the neighborhood of about November 5th to, to 15th, somewhere in that timeframe. That's just off the top of my head. I think that's pretty close. So it would get us a lot closer to where we are in, in terms of actuality. We would be short, obviously, of the expected completion date, and so we would have to, you know, deal with that reality. But, but if, if the board chose to, to give an addition, to approve an additional 101 days, uh, it would put us, I think, back where your architect, and certainly where the contractor, is at least telegraphing that they would like to be.
Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and try to make a motion to some, some, some justice.
Before you do that, you just hang on one second, I want to ask one question.
Okay.
So, going forward, what possible reason could there be for any more days delayed?
Weather.
We're indoors.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not until we get indoors.
Not yet.
That's what Carl was saying, that he won't recommend them, you know, he'd take his professional opinion on what he should recommend, should base on. So this is not the end then.
When you get indoors, that's, he's a street once you get there.
Got you.
I'll go back, Mr. President, and try to make a motion here, to kind of move this thing along. And just your good faith, at least make a motion to include the 21 rain days that we denied originally, and that would match up with Carl's recommendation. And so that leaves us, what, 80 left for between what the contractor wants and where we are? And that's one of those, those are just change order delays?
That's, that's the dirt, Bob, and that's where I.
So we were, we were, you originally asked it for 45 days, Chris, and we gave you 21, so that's 24. So you're 24 plus 21, that's 45, right? Am I right? So I go ahead and give you, I make a motion to give you the 21 rain days, and in, in addition, up to the 45. I'm kind of like, Jay, I think more is still to come, but at least the faith, the good faith here that we'll go ahead and approve a 45-day upwards, and then at the end of the day, that we'll come back and, and see where we are. If everything continues to move forward, and Mother Nature cooperates and stuff, maybe we can work out the additional 40 days that we're still in between. But I'll go with that, if you get that, Mr. President, 21 on the rain days and 24 days on the change order days.
All right, that's a motion.
That's a motion.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. We got a motion by Bob.
I think he's going to.
A total 45 days, 21 rain days, and 25 delay days.
24.
24, I'm sorry. And Jared seconds, a motion, any other discussion?
I think you can go this way, I think it's going to take more.
While we have the gentleman here, why don't we go ahead and resolve this now, rather than kicking the can down the road?
I think you got to have some, a little bit of leverage.
He's here. Why don't we resolve it with him right now?
But we don't know what's coming up, what part.
He had two other dirt issues, and I don't, the best I can recommend, the board didn't prove any delays on that. And one of those 14 days, I don't know what, they might have been 14, I don't remember right now. The one with the, uh, Northwest parking lot.
Think you're right.
And then the one with the sewer. Was it the sewer or the water line? Did the city have water line?
Water line.
He couldn't help that. Carl was just saying.
Carl, that, nothing you just said is reflected on these documents, is that correct?
No, it is reflected.
It is reflected on the documents.
Yeah, look on the change order one, I think. Yeah, look at the last two, change order nine and 10, see.
I see there.
He requested 48 and 14, and the board didn't grant any on those two.
Okay.
So what were your, what are your numbers then? You're saying, uh.
Those, those 28 and 14, we would go along with that, and actually.
Both of those?
Yes, sir.
That's another 28.
No, 28 and 14, that's not a 42.
No, I was looking Southside Bad, too bad, so.
Let, let Jay ask his question. He had, uh, under discussion.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, I was just saying, rather than making a motion and voting for days, and then have to come back and deal with this again, while he's here, why don't we just discuss with John what he's willing to take, and let's move forward.
That's my point, that was my point.
So can I, can I ask a clarifier, or get us, let's get us where we need to be on the minutes? I, I want to make sure the justice.
We got a motion and a second.
And so what we've got on the agenda, and I'm probably being too technical about this, but what we've got on the agenda is discussion. We don't really have action item on the agenda, so if, if we could have Bob's motion to be a motion to add this for potential action on addressing, on addressing rain and change order delay days, okay?
Okay, not put a number on it yet?
Not, not yet, no, it's just to add.
I was saying, my second. Okay.
It's, it's just to add.
Okay.
All right, I got a motion.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'm good with that, yes.
I got a motion to add this issue of delays for the, whether it's rain or change orders, whatever, add that to the agenda by Bob, and a second by Jared. All in favor of adding this to the agenda?
Aye.
Jay?
Nay.
Three to one. Motion passed. You don't want to add it to the agenda?
Well, we can still, before we add it, we can still talk to the man and discuss it before we even add it, so.
Okay, here's my problem. I don't want to resolve this today in the total days.
Aye.
I want some leverage, as, as, as some more information as we get close to the completion date. Come back December 1 at that meeting, and let's talk, you know, kind of see where we are. I mean, I, I, I put it out there, you know, I'm willing to give some in good faith, but I'm not willing to, you know, I mean, he wants all, and he may be deserving of all at the end of the day, you know, but, um, that's just my take, one vote.
Okay, so what, so.
That's not leverage.
Now, wow, now our, uh.
I'm so good at 45 days, so good.
Well, you just, well.
21 on the rain and 24 on the change orders. So I want to go a little bit higher than that for the dirt, other two dirts, then you push it up. I'm willing to resolve the whole issue, so what's the total number, 113?
Well, if you, if you consider the, the architect's recommendation, it's eight, it's 101, 80 and 21.
So, I mean, that's. That makes you happy, right, Chris, 101?
Uh, it would help out a lot, yes, sir.
I would hope that's everything.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know.
Well, the discussion, actually, you know.
That's really not everything. That's everything that Carl recommended to us.
Correct. I mean, the discussion is this, this five, four to five months of delay that we asked for 45 days, which is totally incorrect. He's admitted it, we've admitted it. I know you guys didn't think, I know that much, y'all gave me 21, and it took over four months. So, you know, that's the discussion right now, in my opinion, on, you know, we feel like we're due more than 45.
I, I guess, I'm just. I guess I'm just not ready today to, to resolve this whole issue, because I still think we've got more problems coming down the road, and I think it's going to have to take another, another approach at it. But if y'all want us to try to hash it out on the, on the total number, we can sit here and do it, but.
Well, this can be total, but it doesn't mean, I mean, down the road, you're right, maybe something.
You know, I just, I don't know, I, I, I don't really see it need to, you know, but that's whatever y'all want to do. I mean, I'll, I'll even, you know, I'm still at 45 days.
I like, I like what Bob's saying, and we'll revisit this issue in another 60 days.
We're more than willing to talk to it at any point in time. We appreciate y'all having us here today, it's a good conversation.
It's just, this is more of an informational.
Yep.
You don't have to resolve this till the end. I just would rather, at least you be aware of some of the information. Not wait till the end to try and figure all this out.
Well, I will go ahead and still push for the 45 days, and we made the initial motion. Mr. President? I will go ahead with that motion, I'm still, I'm still pushing the motion for 45 days.
All right, now we have it on the, we added it to the agenda, and, uh, next is Bob making a motion to allow 21 days of rain and 24 days of change orders. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Jared seconds. I'm going to say this again, hopefully we don't have any, any other discussion. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passed.
It's going to be more days.
It's, we're gonna, I mean, we know we're going to have others.
So what was that, total days we just gave you?
45.
45.
21 rain, 24 soil conditions.
So we're, we're square on the rain days, right? What you've asked for, or what you've recommended?
No, yeah, not what he asked for.
What you recommended this day, 21 days?
Congratulations, Carl, we can officially gave them over a year worth of days.
Well, look at, just look at how many days it rained. It rained 300 of those.
I understand.
I think that's it, dude.
Thank you, Mr. Auburn, thank you.
Appreciate it, Chris. Thank Carl. Carl, do we need to resolve the flag star and show a line issue?
Uh, yes, I'm, I, because I'm going to need to do a change order on that. Now, Tim, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't, unless I have questions about the logistics or what.
I mean, is it?
What's the total number, 14,000 and something?
Well, it's.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Is, is any part of this activity that we're about to engage in, in any way, an admission that? that either Rankin County or Flagstar is in any way at fault for a sewer line issue?
Well, neither one of them, I think, would, would, would say that, but the, the issue is that because of the emergency nature of the situation, the work's been done.
Yes, so can we be?
How did we think it happened? Without sounding blamed to anybody, how do we, what is the story on the street, you know?
With Tim, we're in the meetings, I wasn't in the meetings there, and let me, rather me say something inaccurate, I mean, that, you know, let me pass the buck.
I realize this is gossip, we don't gossip, but.
Let, let me go back to the initial, when, when the county was clearing the site, the sewer line got broken. No contractor, county was the one out there, sewer line got broken, sewer line was repaired. Uh, so, but, so, we, we knew where the sewer line was.
And we repaired it.
Yes, county repaired it. Right. So then, the county was working in there, clearing, there was a lot of dirt work that the county did at the beginning of the job, then the contractor came in. Uh, so, the leak was discovered in the sewer line that was draining into the detention pot. We met out there.
So, whoa, 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 we thought we fixed it.
No, no, we did, we did fix it.
We fixed it, but then something else happened that caused it to leak.
And I believe this is in a different spot, yes. So, there's a leak in the sewer line, the contractor uncovers it, the city of Brandon comes out and looks at it, everybody's around and says, okay, Goodlow, who is the sub to Flagstar, the, the dirt work sub, they said, we'll uncover it, the city will fix it, and the county, if they needed, borrow material to put in the hole, the county would supply that, everybody agreed to do that, that's fine. Then, and I'm not sure if it was then, or at the, at some point, Matthew Miller was out there, and once they had it uncovered, uh, and he was a little concerned about it sliding in the future down the hill, so he said.
The pipe.
Right, yes, so he said, we, we need to make some, uh, other changes to how we lay this pipe to make sure it doesn't slide anymore. Everybody agreed to that, no problem. Uh, so, Goodlow came out there, got it uncovered, the city of Brandon sent people out there, now, I wasn't out there at that time, they sent people out there, and for some reason, they left, I don't really know why they left, and they didn't come back to fix it. I was out there, and I don't know if Mike was out there or not, it was about 3:30, 4 o'clock one afternoon, the, the trench is open, I mean, Goodlow has got the trench ready to reinstall the pipe, there's just nobody there to put sewer pipe in the trench. So, Sammy was there with Flagstar, that's their on-site representative, and she said, we can't leave this like this because we're running into this, and we agree, I, I said, no, we cannot, we can't walk away from this site with it like this. So she said, I've got their sub as environment masters, I think, to lay the pipe, uh, she said, I've got them on standby to come lay the pipe, they've got the materials ready, they can be here shortly, and Goodlow's willing to stay here and get it covered back up. That's what happened. Uh, at some point in there, I got a call from Mr. Charles, it was Brandon, he said, we, we, we're not going to fix it. I don't really, I don't know, I never really understood why, I, something about it, I guess worried him about the fix.
I can hazard a guess, somebody spoke without having the authority to speak about fixing it.
But I mean, I, I, I mean, we've got a sewer trench that's not very deep, open, ready to lay pipe in it. I mean, to me, in my opinion, it wasn't a difficult fix at that point.
What size pipe?
Uh, it's eight inch, I think, eight or 10 inches. It's just gravity sewer.
Yeah, that's nothing.
Uh, so, and, and so, environment masters came in, did it, Goodlow stayed there, so you're basically paying for a, a day of Goodlow's time, and, you know, they've got the equipment sitting there, uh, and the environment masters, their bill was $1,100 or something, it, it wasn't, uh, so I think the total was $7,000, something like that.
Okay. That, that's a very helpful explanation, just what we're dealing with, is that if there's ever an issue out there in the future, we know who they're going to blame.
Flagstar's on the hook, they had to pay the 70 to the subs, and now Flagstar's looking to us to make them hold for this problem.
That's correct.
Okay.
70 grand, you said?
Sixty seven hundred, I think.
Sixty seven hundred or six seven thousand?
No, no, sixty seven hundred.
Six thousand?
Six, seven.
Six thousand seven hundred seventy one dollars.
Okay. Six thousand. Six seven, I thought the first, I thought that's what he said it again with, but when we have all this discussion.
Brandon really must be broke.
I just wanted, you, you cleared it up.
That's not fair.
You know, I don't, I don't know.
Maybe true.
I just have a sneaking suspicion that city of Brandon got out there, that, and the wannabes said they'd fix it, and then they went back to the people that made the decision, and they said, eh, it's not really our problem, that shouldn't have been ours, whether it is or not, I don't know, I'm just on the politics side of it, I had to guess.
Anyway, Craig, do you have an issue with us paying for it?
No, sir.
Alright, I make a motion, well, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, go ahead and add the change order on there too, so it's total 14,000.
Wait, where's the 14 coming from?
You got, uh, the other change order is, is to add some access control and a mag lock.
That, it's on our, it's on the consent.
So that's along with, okay.
Yep.
It's on the consent?
I think so. I thought I saw it on there.
It's on there, but I don't think we talked about action here.
I read.
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, I read it on something, yep.
Yeah, I, I, I had it on.
It was on that.
Laura, do you know the total?
The, the total of both of them is 14,179 dollars.
Alright.
Okay, see, I thought you said it was going to be 14 in addition to 6.
No, it was a six something plus. Alright, Jay makes a motion to add this to the agenda, we have a second, Bob seconds. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved now, you want to make a motion?
Motion to approve paying the change order and the repair for the city of Brandon.
Alright, Jay makes a motion, Bob seconds, any other discussion, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, motion passes.
There's a roof coming out there with a 911 building, they started?
And started, yeah, there, uh, matter of fact, that's the pop of Mike, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting, I hope either this week or next week. We want to make sure that we call, make calls of minimal amount of disruption. You know, we don't want to open any, we don't want to have contractors open roofs, right? And they, they wouldn't anyhow, normally it's in our specifications, they can't, they need to try and, you know, look at, hey, see what kind of rain's going to be. The positive thing, with that group, is if we're in the two driest months of the year, now we're in the driest month of the year, so hopefully we can get started and get most of that work done, counting rain, just soon as I say that, monsoon is coming. Y'all have any other questions, I know it's confusing, confusing me, but, uh, I'm glad to get.
Yeah, all them numbers you spewing out there definitely got me confused.
No.
I appreciate your work, though.
Yeah, thank you, Carl, we appreciate it.
Thank you for, uh.
Even though you totally missed the days, yeah.
Uh, no, I thank you for being our person, and, and.
I am, y'all.
I feel like, I feel like we can trust you.
I am, y'all, that's fair, but I have to be fair, but I think it's right, and y'all don't have to agree with what I.
Well, I, I mean, I think we hire you and pay you, we ought, if we can't trust you, then we need to get somebody else, I mean, if you.
That's true, too.
But anyhow, thank you, sir. Alright, Ms. Fortenberry. Hey, Mike, you want to take her place?
I can do her seat.
Come on, Wanda.
Now, hey.
He's kidding, he's kidding.
I was playing. Tyke was going to try.
Oh, my gosh.
I'll do it.
He just wanted to get out of here.
Um, item A, request approval to void the 2019 tax sale of PPIN 76, 77658 due to clerical error, the assessed value was not changed in the computer that would have reflected the correct paid in full amount.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, Bob makes a motion to approve, Jay seconds, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Item B, approval of the year-end reports from the tax collector and solvent and delinquent taxpayers, real property sold to state, mobile homes, personal property, listing of outstanding checks returned for insufficient funds, and list of surrendered tax from October 1st, 2018 to September 13th, 2019. September 3rd, 2019.
Second.
Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Uh, could you approve Adam A?
Yes, sir.
Sure. A motion to approve.
Alright, Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Bob seconds, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Item B?
Motion approved.
Jared makes a motion.
Second.
Bob seconds, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
That's too much to read, I may, you may have to read it, I got the short one, yeah.
Is that there?
Alright, let's go. Uh, Jay makes a motion.
I'll second.
Jared seconds, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
And item D.
B?
D.
D? Yeah, well, I'll see it.
Dog yard, dog kennel.
Huh?
Animal shelter.
Alright. We, uh, we got a, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Alright, Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Bob seconds, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, uh, opposed, motion passes. Thank you. That was pretty tough, John.
I'll just try to move it along.
Thank you.
Go ahead and take mine and Mike's together.
Can you do this quick?
I'm requesting the authority this morning, um, we got reverse auction exemption approved for these term bids on October 2nd, and I'm requesting authority to advertise bids for the unit system.
Second.
Jared makes a motion, Jay seconds, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
You could go ahead and take Mike's, you know.
Alright, motion to approve, uh, A for Mike, September and October.
Second.
Alright, Bob makes a motion to approve the work accomplished in September and October, and scheduled for October, Jared seconds it, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Before I read this next one, are y'all okay with the meeting we had the other day with them?
AT&amp;T?
Yeah, we'll see how it was.
Y'all meeting with them?
Hey, it worked, because I got a call from one of the big contractors on the boring side, he goes, I heard y'all, uh, shut down Seasburg, and so we did, you know, for good reason. Say, well, okay, just, but y'all back in business.
I do have a question, on the site, on Stump Ridge Road where cable was cut, or whatever, were they really out two weeks?
I don't, I went over, I, I found the cable, there's a new cable on the ground now, Steve, like they'll lay for temporary.
Just throw it out there.
But my understanding, the guy still ain't got internet, so I don't, I don't know what their problem is out there.
That's pretty long, to just.
That is long.
To, I mean, just to go from.
We had the same incident down on Salem Cato Road, they were, what, two weeks?
Three weeks.
Three weeks before they got, got.
We got telephone numbers now, we're in business.
From AT&amp;T?
Yeah.
Let's call, let's call AT&amp;T, and, and this isn't the kind of service that I would expect after we had our meeting. I mean, that's.
At least.
Alright.
I agree with you, but I did, didn't want to read off, y'all wasn't receptive to, I reckon.
I, I'm making a motion, we go with it, but I do want to talk to them and find out, why does it take? I mean, today, kids do their homework with the internet, and when they're having to take their kid to the school at 6:30 in the morning, for them to get in the library, to be able to do their homework for that day, I mean, I can, I understand, a day or two, maybe three.
I tell you what would be a bad idea. I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't mean to ruin it. It's, you know, the one he's talking about on Salem Cato, it was AdCamp that hit the line when they were out there doing, putting the road, putting overlay in.
Yeah, I mean, we just.
We ought to require the contractor to have a subcontractor on hand to fix those things a certain amount of time. I mean, that, I mean, that's their problem, I mean, anybody go out there and splash it?
Yeah, but I mean, the problem, the problem with, the problem with that one was, somebody had laid down a temporary cable on the grass, and it's, it got covered up, I mean, it was this far, two inches off the blacktop, I mean, we just clipping the grass and clipped that.
Did we clip it?
Well, I mean, AdCamp did, when they was clipping some grass back from the shoulder, so, I mean, you're talking about covering, uncovering two inches, I mean, you got a 10-inch dig rule, they're not, they're not even going to 10 inches deep, you know. See, and, and he could splash the line anyway.
Alright, I made a motion, Jay seconds it, all in favor?
We just monitored it.
Any opposed, motion passes, uh, but we, I, I do want to make the call.
Okay.
Alright.
That's it, you don't have a C.
You're done.
No.
No? I don't see it.
Well, I just, I want to inform y'all, we are, we do have a mowsing truck that we talked about the other day, we still have not got it fixed.
What?
Uh, we're still dealing with some parts issues, uh.
What's it going to take for us to order another one, because you sent that email, is that what that was all about?
That's for, not, not on this particular.
Alright, so as far as the state law goes, and us being the back half of the term, what are our limited, can we buy it, approve, go ahead, get specs drawn up, to purchase it, to do bids for a new one?
This is, this is equipment.
Yes.
Correct.
To get a new mowsing truck.
Yeah, so you, you got to declare that it's, that it's a necessity, uh, for the, in the best interest of the citizens of the county, there's specific language that I'll have to make sure that we, we document.
I mean, they've been working on our 15-year-old or older truck for two weeks now, I know.
How much have we, how much have we gathered invested in the old truck?
Uh, I don't know what this computer board is, what part of this computer board we got to replace, but we're going to be somewhere around $7,000 in this repair.
Yeah, so it's a judgment call, guys, on, at, at what point do you get to a, to the position where the repair is essentially building you a brand-new piece of equipment?
Would we be better waiting until November or January?
I, I don't think it's going to make any difference, but at this point, we're, we're one man shy of a unanimous board, and so my preference would be that we look at this on 15th, when all five of y'all are here.
Okay.
Okay, we're missing Daniel today, and I'm not good with the minutes reflecting that there was one of you absent.
Alright.